All right. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:05 for the August 6, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. My name is Stephanie Slish. I'm your chair. To my right, I have Jimmy Tarr, alternate chair, far end, Doug Finn. To my left, Lee Bell. And over here, Bella Yeager, who's our town planner. As always, at the top of every meeting, we have public forum. This is an opportunity for folks who are here to speak to something that is not on the agenda. So this is your opportunity to bring something forward to the city if you'd like to share anything. You're here to speak at all, or are you here to listen?
I don't know what's on the agenda. I was supposed to meet Andy and Kelsey here about selling the land.
You're the neighbor.
And yeah, I am the neighbor.
I emailed you that they were not coming this month.
Oh.
But that when you are finished with your A&R, like, application, that would be the perfect time to come in.
I see.
Yeah. How's that going?
I don't know. I thought the meeting was to find out if the land was sellable.
Right.
Because they, that's the last contact I had with Kelsey, that the town's still deciding if the town was sellable, if the land was sellable.
With Kelsey.
Kelsey is my neighbor. Kelsey and Andy.
Andy Mariano. This is, Kelsey is his wife?
Yes.
Got you. Okay. Yeah. I believe I sent you an email, I hope.
Where is it?
You should have made an email about this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe last week.
With what? Oh, another one of those.
Yeah. So Andy is not at this meeting because, since he's not selling the land, we realized, he had been interested in coming to a meeting because he had contacted us, and we were going to talk to him about some other projects he has going on in his part B. But it's because it's up to you to do the A&R application, we realized it doesn't really make sense for him to come in to talk about the buying of the land, since that's from you. So you need to do the A&R application, and then you bring the A&R to us at a meeting, and then we review it.
Okay.
So sorry for the miscommunication.
So that has to be done before it's decided whether or not the land can be sold, or...
Well, you'd need to have it survey, I mean, you need to have it surveyed. Yeah. You need to have the part surveyed that you want to sell.
Yep.
I can send you, the instructions for the A&R are just the instructions about how to, like, divide your land and sell it. So it involves, like, the survey, having it assessed for sale, and then the actual A&R application is what you bring when you have all those pieces, like, a survey that you bring to us, and then we say, it's fine to divide your land this way and sell it, basically. Yes.
To be very clear.
Yes.
You would divide your land, and that would, that would involve an engineer or a surveyor. A surveyor or an engineer. The town's role is basically looking at your plan to divide, and we look at two things. Do all the lots have frontage on a public way or on a private road? Minimum amount of frontage. And can you access the buildable portion of the land across your frontage?
There's no buildable portion.
So...
The land is not buildable, but the portion that we would sell, it's not, doesn't have the 200 feet or whatever.
Is it going to be added to a neighbor's lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what he wants to do.
Then that's fine. Then that, as long as that notation is on the plan?
Yeah.
That's all we care about.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah. Whether it's sellable is whether you have somebody who wants to buy it. Really, that has nothing to do with the town, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a lot easier than maybe...
It sounds easier than, it is easier than it sounds.
Yes.
It is.
So I need to do survey and appraisal.
Yeah.
Fill out the A&R.
Yeah.
Give you guys that information, and then proceed.
Remember that we're going to be looking at, we need to look at an engineered, surveyed plan of the land. So it's going to have to be, the design will have to be drawn up by a surveyor or an engineer. It has to be stamped with their stamp, because it goes from our signature to the Registry of Deeds. It becomes a legally binding document. Any surveyor, any engineer is going to know the rules for an A&R plan. So, yeah.
Yeah, because we've had people come with, like, back of napkin drawings, and we're like...
Doesn't work.
It's not like that anymore.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. He was going to come in to talk to us about what he's doing on his land, but then we realized, until there's an A&R, it doesn't really make sense for him to come in. And so it should all be done together, basically, whenever you're ready.
Keep a road and streets, I know exactly. I think I know what you're talking about. Okay. Yeah.
The buyer, and he doesn't need to come to the meeting. So... And Bella's here as a resource. She's, when is your hours here in the town hall? Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you. Apologies for the inconvenience. And apologies for that, like, kind of unwieldy public forum. All right. Moving from public forum to the approval of the minutes from the June 4, 2025 meeting, our last meeting. I had a chance to go through them and read them, and they looked fine by me.
They're well?
And noticing, just Lee, you can't vote on these, right? Because you weren't here?
Yes, ma'am.
Unless you, by sworn affidavit, watched the meeting and...
I shall abstain. I will make a motion to accept the minutes as read, or as presented, I'm sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. June 4 meeting minutes are approved. And then the next piece on our agenda is a continued public hearing. This is a special permit application for the 336 West Street, parcel ID number 206-57-0. The doggy daycare was here at Gottlieb. I'm going to reopen the public hearing at 6:11. This is a continued hearing from our last meeting. Since that meeting, we've received an email from the applicant withdrawing their application. Says that, I can just read it for the record. Hi Bella, hope you're well. I want to thank you all for your help and support preparing for the meeting earlier this month. After much thought, we feel that even though if we are approved for the special permit opening a new business in a neighborhood of angry residents who don't want us there is not a smart decision. Unfortunately, we will not be moving forward with our business proposal in Hatfield. Brian, Irma, and I are heartbroken. We were really hoping we could, this would work out for us and the town. Take good care, and thank you. And again, please thank Lori as well. Best, care golly.
I will make a motion that we close the public hearing and accept the applicant's withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Really...
Closing the public hearing at 6:13.
Just a postscript on that. It's very unfortunate. It only takes two or three projects with that kind of response or that kind of conclusion to really stigmatize the town. Speaking from experience in another town that I'm familiar with, it's a reputation that you get that it's very, very hard to lose. I think that it probably wasn't necessarily best location for the proposed use, but it's unfortunate that there wasn't some other option for them to consider. I'll leave it at that.
Thanks for mentioning that, especially as we hear how we want to be business-friendly in town.
Right.
Trying to be.
All right. With that, our next item on the agenda, drumroll please. We have the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We have folks here that they can, hopefully they can introduce themselves for the record in giving us a presentation on our zoning bylaws and reviewing them. It was part of a, I don't know if you're touched on this, it was part of a technical assistance award that we got through the, through application that Bella worked on and Andrew worked on and I worked on in supporting, of trying, that part of this that also supports the comprehensive plan, a little bit of our housing production plan that Bella's working on, and then a big chunk of it was looking at our zoning bylaws and kind of making, pointing out some places we could improve, but then also touching on a couple of the good things we have going on in there. And as such, this is kind of in motion a lot because of Hatfield 2040 and the comprehensive plan update, which, John, if you don't mind panning over to that beautiful poster over there, we have a living reminder of the priorities that came out of that, and that is technically one of the checkboxes there that we can check off once we finally get through updating our zoning to make it reflect more of the wants and needs that match this Hatfield 2040 vision. With that, I'll happily pass the mic over to talk about and present this part of the DLTA project.
Thank you, members of the planning board. My name is Kyle Fennell. I'm a senior planner in the Land Use and Environment Department at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and tonight I'm joined by my colleague...
Aiden Hemian-McMahon, also a senior planner in the Land Use and Environment Department at PDPC.
So we are collaborating with the town, working on a DLTA-funded project. That's District Local Technical Assistance. This is a state appropriation to all regional planning agencies. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission serves both Hampden and Hampshire counties. So we have an annual call for proposals. The town, through the efforts of Bella and Andrew, proposed a three-phased project, advancing priority recommendations from the recently completed Hatfield 2040 comprehensive planning effort. As Stephanie mentioned, those three project, or three elements of the project include a full diagnostic and technical review of the zoning bylaw. We're also supporting with the newly-formed Hatfield 2040 Action Committee, which has met twice to date, and we're hoping to provide more support as they advance the other recommendations. And we're also conducting some data research and mapping for an update to the housing production plan. All of that's part of the DLTA-funded project. Today, we're here to discuss specifically the zoning bylaw diagnostic. We forwarded along our first draft of the document, and upon our arrival today, we handed out some slides, which I will also provide for our remote viewers and to kind of walk us through the document and also provide moments for us to pause, have a little back-and-forth, some dialogue, so that we can hear from you all, the town officials, you know, what you see as priorities and areas of concern within the document and areas for improvement. So there are some remaining tasks related to this. Again, this is our first draft of the document, so we're going to focus primarily on the diagnostic review, the technical review, which will start on page nine of the document that we forwarded along yesterday. So we're hoping that we can prioritize this element of the project, the DLTA-funded project, to be completed by, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're saying, that's correct.
Yep.
Okay. So we're hoping to finalize this element of the project by October. This, DLTA projects are funded on the calendar year, so we're just wanting to try to get this element complete so that we still have a little bit of time to support the Action Committee and make sure that we've completed the remaining data support for the housing production plan. So we will draft a final version after we have a conversation with you, and we invite your feedback, and we'll incorporate that into not only the technical review, but also in shaping recommendations that you want to prioritize in terms of revising, updating, modernizing, and streamlining the zoning bylaw. We'll also include kind of the implementation of that update, and that can also include model bylaw language. If there's sections that you recognize are missing topics, we'll do the research on the backend and provide some model language that you can consider and/or adopt at a future So getting into the diagnostic review, our first draft, which we sent along dated today, includes primarily the technical review of the zoning bylaw, which was last amended by 1424. This is the most recent version that's accessible on the town's website. Again, the criteria that we look at during our technical review will be the order in which we kind of discuss the work to date. We do consider, before we get into the zoning bylaw, trying to get a context of where the town is in their planning efforts. Because of the recently adopted comprehensive plan, that's really primarily where we're focusing. We're not going to go too far back, because that was a very in-depth, two-year process where all zoning efforts were kind of brought together. So we think it's the most relevant and pertinent source of context. We do look at regional planning efforts to see if there's additional thoughts, patterns that the town was wanting to consider, but very minimal in our work. Before we get into the technical review, on pages seven and eight of the draft document we provided, we do keep in mind the State Zoning Act, Chapter 40A of Mass General Laws. It's an essential piece of legislation, and we keep all of the excluded and prohibited, I'm sorry, protected uses that the zoning act outlines. We keep all that in mind as we review the zoning bylaw. So currently, it's, it's presented just as a quick summary of all those topics that we keep an eye out for. So far in our review, we haven't seen any glaring concerns in terms of inconsistencies or issues with 40A, Chapter 40A. Chapter 40A also establishes the authority of planning boards and zoning boards of appeal, so part of our general recommendation is that, moving forward, to make sure that these zoning updates continue, we encourage all of our planning boards and zoning board of appeals to be in dialogue, to work collaboratively, to make sure that the zoning bylaw is, you know, the best type of document that it can be to support both boards. So jumping into the first section, structure and format, this starts on page nine. Generally, we've found so far that the structure and format of the zoning bylaw is logically structured. We've identified a few provisions that, located in sections that seem to break the flow of the document, could be confusing to readers. And those specifically are the placement of the ADU provisions, accessory dwelling units, which, those provisions were amended at the most recent annual town meeting.
They've been approved by the ADU's office yet, but...
There's the pending review from the Attorney General's Office. Thank you, Stephanie. But the recent amendments to the State Zoning Act created a protected use definition of accessory dwelling units. The town of Hatfield responded accordingly. It tried to, or has passed amended provisions for ADUs. They're still currently nested in the Section 34, related to non-conforming structures and uses, so just moving forward, we're identifying that that might not be the most logical placement of those provisions, might be confusing for applicants who want to execute their buyer, their right to create an accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling unit on a single-family lot. Additionally, those related to medical marijuana, Section 7A, and marijuana establishments, Section 7B. Large regulations pertaining to special uses that stand out, separate from all other special uses, and are oddly numbered A and B, a larger section related to stormwater management, Section 7. So just calling attention to that interesting kind of break of logic. There are also additionally scattered provisions just related to definitions, some procedures, and some special regulations that could be consolidated, centralized, just for the sake of streamlining procedure and making the document more clear and user-friendly. So at this point, we'd love to hear from the planning board members, your thoughts regarding the structure and the format of the document, the zoning bylaw as adopted. Curious what your thoughts are in terms of the biggest structural problem that you all have found with the bylaws? If there are issues created that pose a hurdle to applicants that come before the board, or issues that the board members see when trying to understand, particularly if there are any new members of the board that have had a hard time kind of getting oriented to the document? Also curious to see if the staff have any thoughts on this topic.
Anyone like to jump in?
I'm just going to wait to see if anybody else was...
You go.
First of all, thank you for doing this. I, not necessarily, I'm new to Hatfield generally, very new to Hatfield, depending on your, your measurement, but not necessarily new to land use and planning. I absolutely positively agree that a single definitions section makes sense, and to consolidate all definitions into that. I absolutely positively agree that a re, I'll use the term recodification, i.e. maybe maneuvering some of these various sections into a slightly different order does make sense, and to make sure that all internal references are consistent and appropriate, that makes perfect sense. I think that because Hatfield has been using a, a chart of uses, a table of uses, that probably trying to, you know, lever that out, even though it's not my favorite thing, but to try to lever that out of the zoning bylaw, replace it with something else doesn't make sense, so there it is. I do like the idea, and I would love to hear your thoughts, on removing procedures from the zoning bylaw altogether. And the reason is I want the town, the staff, the office, and the planning board to have the flexibility to establish their own procedures and to modify or change them as they see fit.
Would you like to give an example?
Sure. The procedure for applying for a special permit, very simply. If we decide that, okay, we want someone to come here and present their materials before we even begin to consider a public hearing, which actually has been common practice, that's the right and privilege of the planning board to do. If we want to change that procedure so that the planning, the, the town planner instead receives the application, reviews it with the applicant, determines whether or not it's actionable, and then proceeds forward with public notice and all that, if we decide that that's the way we'd like to do it, I don't want to have to go back and ask town meeting for approval to change the bylaw to make that so. I just want us to be able to decide to do it.
Because part of the other thing that I'm thinking about is how it says you need to make X number of copies and this size, and it's like, it's harkening back to a time where you couldn't just email the application.
Right. Yeah. So anything that we, gives the board the most flexibility, I'm in favor of. Now, I don't want to get too deep, because I know that you probably have some additional notes, but...
One of my comments is related to what you just said, too, so...
Okay. The, I've got two other things, but I'll, I'll reserve for later. Go ahead.
Yeah. One of the thing, questions I had was, I think what's been most confusing is our procedures are kind of all lumped together, so special permit, site plan approval, and they reference each other, and it makes it confusing to someone who, like, might be new to zoning, so like, looking at it and being like, okay, what are actually the steps I need to take? And, and like, what do I need to include in an application? And so somehow making that easier to understand.
Yeah.
And whether that's, can be done, yeah, I'm curious to whether that could be done outside of the bylaws now that you've mentioned that.
Well, something that Doug mentioned also was our, our table of usage is horribly antiquated. I mean, how do you go about updating if that's how, if that's the methodology you want to stick with?
Do you have a section that we're going to talk about with table of uses or not? I think, yeah.
Well, yeah.
You know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff that just isn't covered at all.
Well, and the definitions specifically, too.
Yeah, and we find ourselves trying to chase definitions of certain things to, to shoehorn things into where they might fit.
Table of uses forces you down an avenue, which basically requires you to adjudicate the use instead of the impact on the, the immediate neighborhood and the, and the surrounding neighborhood and the town as a whole, which to me is a more responsive and more forgiving way to look at, at using land.
Which is also called, like, form-based.
Form-based, or, yeah, form-based zoning, or...
Which is something that's potentially recommended that we get to, into as well.
Yeah.
Going back to the, yeah, structure and forms pieces.
Yeah, I was trying to keep it to that, though.
Yeah. Let's keep it on the structure and the format of how, how it is. Any other comments on that?
Only that we've got medical marijuana, marijuana establishments, we've been talking about ADUs, we've been, you know, talking about mixed use. All of those, to me, feel as though, oh, wow, those could be considered uses all under one heading in the, in the structure. So, you know, you've got your, your zoning areas, you have your table of uses, you have your very basic crit, you know, establishment of the zoning bylaw, your definitions, but then under uses, yeah. I have more to say about that, but I want to, I want to wait until we get...
You talked about maybe lumping more in one category, so to speak.
Yeah. So, yeah, uses that require a special permit, for example, is basically what we're concerned with.
Right.
So anything that requires a special permit, that type of use, where we are looking for something specific, a marijuana dispensary, that's not just somebody, you know, building a porch on a slightly non-conforming lot where a special permit is needed, but it's, you know, basic, where that's a use that we're going to have specific criteria, we're going to be focused on that. So, but anyway.
I would just say that I really appreciated the mention of the need for a clear logical flow, just in the basic table of contents. I don't think that the headings are intuitive in any way. I don't think special regulations means anything to anybody. To be separated out from something like dimensional intensity, what does special mean? I think it can just be a lot easier to follow if you're going into it kind of blindly, like, what would be the mindset of someone? What are they looking for? And how can you lead them along with these section titles?
One of my notes was balancing legal integrity with, I use the term pedestrian comprehension, or layman, layman comprehension. If the average person off the street can't look at the bylaw, read a section, and understand what it means, then it's useless. So, yeah, anyway.
Agreed.
But that's like a big character kind of quality that we can talk about later. Anyway.
Thank you for all those thoughts. I believe between the two of us, we've captured all of it. And you're right.
You'll have the access to this reporting, too.
Absolutely. And thank you for not getting too far ahead of us, because we, we are going to touch on some of those, some of those thoughts that you've already mentioned, alluded to. So following the document, looking at the next section that we get into, assessing the accessibility of the document and its ease of use for the average member of the public or layperson that wants to develop in town.
Right.
The zoning bylaw is accessible as a PDF to the public on the town's website. We're now on page 10 of the document.
Or five of the slide.
Or five of the slide.
Okay. Drop that now. Good. This is easy.
So the, the PDF version of the document is accessible on the town's website. If the public looks at the planning board page, uh, it rests, um, not at the bottom of the page, but on a, a tab on the left-hand side, I believe. There is a hyperlink in the diagnostic included. Um, once the public accesses the bylaws, several features, uh, aid navigation, uh, but there are some rooms for improvement. Uh, mentioned already, there is a table of contents, but headers could be, uh, addressed, make it a little bit more comprehensive, comprehensible. Um, but also graphics, uh, and illustrations, uh, could be helpful to, uh, convey information that's hard to explain through text. Some more visual concepts such as setbacks, uh, those types of, uh, dimensional, uh, details. Uh, also procedural flow charts are just another example, not mentioned in the technical review, but something that could be explored. Uh, additionally, cross references and hyperlinks, uh, are valuable additions to help the public navigate the document both in print, you know, cross referencing, directing the reader to the appropriate, um, relevant section, but digitally embedding those links into the document so that if someone is looking to open a particular business, they can click on that, it takes them to the, uh, the relevant provision, they know how to proceed.
What a concept.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify, kick it back to you. I think what I just heard is a more simplified, basically a what do you want to do and options that are given in plain English. Um, I'm looking to open a business in Hatfield. What kind of business? ABC. Okay. I'm picking B. Okay. That means you're going to need to pay attention to this and this and this. And here are the links to the, those sections of the bylaw. That's what you were talking about? Something like that or?
So in crafting the bylaw, you can, uh, draft your language to quickly direct.
The hyperlink to the bylaw.
To the bo, sections of bylaw that are relevant. You may be speaking more to a separate document. We've prepared for communities, uh, permitting guides, which are much more abbreviated, you know, 15, 20-page documents where it's very simple. I want to open a business. Uh, it's this type of business. It's this type of permit. These are the people to go to. This is the timeframe that I have. And it's a bit more succinct.
Okay.
In the bylaw itself though, properly formatting a digital PDF, you can embed a link to the net, to the appropriate page so that it's not just text.
Sure.
So what it references.
No, I get that. I totally get that. Yeah.
So that's more of what we're speaking to in this.
But in the bylaw itself.
Talking about like a simple kind of a, a one pager executive summary sort of thing where people are provided access. So, no, fair enough. Understood. And I think.
Could do something with that if we had a more, something more than just a static uploaded PDF.
Well, and I think that's where the, the procedural flow charts, you just described that. I said absolutely, underlined, yes, yes, yes. Perfect. Because the biggest question, even the, the person who was here earlier talking about an A and R, she was uncertain as to the, the practice or, or what steps to do and what order. A lot of that, I think we could develop and build and put onto our website and refer people there.
Permitting guide, yeah.
A permitting guide. Yeah. Basically the equivalent of like an eight-page.
That sounds like a, an, an, an extra project that we can have Bella just work.
Yeah. Well, no, it's, it's right. But, um, I, I think going to something that I think Bella said, which is making sure that the table of contents and the section headers are clean and clear language so that people can easily find what they're looking for.
There's nothing worse than going through the needle in the haystack to find what you're looking for when you know it's in there someplace.
Right.
And it could easily just be delineated properly.
Yep.
In the beginning. So people can, you know, know where to look.
Yeah, right. It could be a marijuana bylaw under, under stormwater, right?
Hmm, right. Right.
Exactly. So, yeah.
And imagine like the definition section, all active hyperlinks and you could like click and go back to like where they're referenced in the document.
With the definitions, I had this as a note. Um, might as well mention it right now. Um, I'm assuming that you would, like I, uh, would point to definitions in other documents in every case where compat, where, um, where appropriate. I.e. the state defines an ADU. We should not redefine it, even if we're using the exact same language, because the state definition will always prevail anyways unless we're breaking it down and further refining, in which case we can do that. An attached ADU can be clear language, but ADU accessory dwelling unit should always refer to the state's definition. There's, you know, a variety of other things that I could point to, so.
Yes, those are definitely best practices. Um, what we tend to recommend. Um, also for the sake of not just state definitions, but particularly, um, considering Hatfield's proximity to the Connecticut River and large floodplain, there are federal definitions to consider as well.
Yep.
Uh, for property owners in the town to participate in the, um, national flood insurance program. Uh, so that is something to consider. It's not just state definitions that need to be, uh, appropriately included, but broader definitions and provisions themselves.
So with the access and ease of use section, that what you've explained, your discussion questions, have we hit them yet?
Yeah. Uh, so upgrades such as hyperlink, cross references, or adding illustrations.
Absolutely. All three.
Sounds like, it seems the board is generally in support of that. Are there additional thoughts that perhaps we haven't voiced? Um, or if there are any technical rules that you think are really most, uh, in need of some type of visual aid that we can, uh, try to provide examples of?
If I had to make one comment, I'd say we need to make these, the presentation of this not scary for older people who are not necessarily technologically sharp, we'll say. So I, I think simplicity along the way would go far for people being able to access what they're looking for. You know, they may not understand every part of it, but at least they'll know where, you know, know where to look. And I, I think that if we give people the easiest possible way to know where to look, then if they come to us, they're going to come with some type of information ahead of time, which would certainly make everybody's job a lot easier if we weren't fighting about things, if we're just, if everybody's on the same page about what the, what the, the rules are.
Yeah. I, I think procedural flow charts would be a big help. It was something that I wasn't even.
It really would. I think that's a brilliant idea. Yeah. So, um, it's purely speaking about structure. Um, Bella, correct me if I'm wrong. Is there a section in the current bylaw that shows or that details when revisions to the bylaw were made?
Um, that does come up later, but they, there's like highlighted sections that pop in and out occasionally. But then at the end, I guess there's a list of amendments, isn't there?
So there's two, there's two locations where a history of amendments to the bylaw exists. Uh, the opening page has, uh, a list since the, this current iteration was adopted in 2003, I believe. Uh, it lists all the town meetings, annual and special where a zoning amendment was adopted. A more detailed history is, uh, in the back of the document. There's a single page. What is inconsistent in regards to noting amended, uh, provisions is some are noted in the header of the provision itself when it was amended. Some are not. So, um, for instance, the, I think it's the, uh, water protection or supply protection was amended, uh, in 2019, but it's not noted on the provision. It's in the history. So you don't know that it's more recent than other provisions.
So the suggestion I was going to make is just, uh, if, if an entire section was added or significantly modified, I'm thinking about the ADU as a case in point, at the, on the header in the, in that section, the header for that section, there should be a reference to a footnote and in the footnote, it should say amended by vote of town meeting, annual town meeting, such and such a date to 2023 or whatever the date was. Um, and 2024, what happened? If it's, uh, something specific like if we, you know, went from 25-foot setbacks to 20-foot setbacks, okay, put that in there. Amended ATM, you know, May 2016, uh, previously 25 feet. Um, but being able to provide a direct pathway for people, particularly, and this is where the attorneys and the people who are filing appeals or people who are trying to reactivate a long dormant building lot, they're going to need to know that. Um, if you've got a building lot that was created in 1930s and nothing's happened on it, regardless of the zoning changes that might have happened since then, it still retains the status as a building lot. So understanding what that is, if we went from one acre to a half acre at a certain point for a minimum building lot size or, or vice versa, if the lot existed previous to it, it still retains its status as a building lot.
And it's clear what the dates are working on.
Yeah. Yeah. So that becomes a real nightmare if you're really trying to do. But anyway, I would recommend integrating dates of provisions as footnotes.
The only things that I would say maybe we wouldn't need to have the illustrative examples for, cause I see, are like ones where someone's very obviously going to be using, uh, engineer for anyway, that might already understand the technical language. Like for, I'm just, it, just trying to do like a, like, for example, you said illustrative examples of calculations for like parking ratios.
Yeah, no, no.
Or lot coverage.
No.
That's something like that an engineer that's doing this work and presenting for a special town meeting, or I'm sorry, for a special permit, they should know that. And I don't know if the layperson would need to like have that information. I don't know what others think about that.
I, I agree. And I would think that most, if you're talking about anything that's a slight site plan review or anything probably business-related where there's a special permit or site plan review involved, that the idea of illustrating, you know, what lot, I mean, maybe a diagram which says what is lot coverage? You know, maybe perhaps, and then here's the lot, here's a house, here's a driveway. We consider lot coverage to be any impervious surface. So that includes the driveway, includes the sidewalk, includes the roof of the house.
Mm-hmm.
Sure. But a definition would work as well. So.
Interesting that you suggested also what a properly screened vegetative buffer looks like because that has ranged depending.
Mm-hmm.
In the past. So, but I'm like, isn't it obvious? Isn't it, isn't it, it states very clearly that it's supposed to be this many feet and this high and this many years and this, yeah. So, but I mean.
Does Hatfield define corner lots separately in terms of setbacks and in terms of frontage?
Frontage? No. Um, I don't, I'll have to refer to that table. I don't know. But it's a table, which is better than a bunch of words. So.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, the next section that we, um, have some assessment of the bylaw, we look for clarity and consistency. Of course, you know, the bylaw is, um, kind of a living document. It's amended, uh, occasionally, sometimes annually as, uh, development issues arise or, uh, new opportunities emerge. So inconsistencies are common in any zoning bylaw. A few items that we've identified that may need some addressing, um, pretty standard vague and undefined terms, um, conflicting or inconsistent provisions. Uh, there's the, the lack of cross references. So just the, the fact that it's, it's easy to get lost in the document. Uh, inconsistent terminology, uh, for example, accessory dwelling units, there's still references in the use of accessory apartments. So it can be, uh, a source of confusion. Uh, there's also instances of disapproved provisions. So just like, um, it's important to note where amendments are made by town vote. Um, the attorney general does have the final say on those, uh, amended bylaws and on occasion disapproves amendments either in part or in whole. There are instances of, um, remaining numeration and disclaimer text, uh, particularly related to, I believe hazardous materials is a primary, uh, topic that has several, uh, issues. Something to consider, a general question, um, many towns will grant authority to the town clerk to address formatting issues that come about, uh, following a attorney general's decisions to amend and rectify those non-substantive formatting issues. Um, curious if Hatfield has granted that authority. It's typically a general bylaw or a warrant article.
There's the classic and possibly apocryphal story about there being a random comma in the constitution of the United States. And if it is in fact a comma and not just a blot of ink, it fundamentally changes the meaning of the, uh, of the language. Um, I would be, apocryphal or not, I would be a little nervous about allowing a town clerk to change the text of a bylaw that has been otherwise approved by town meeting. Um, unless it's a clear and obvious scrivener's error like a misspelling. Um, but I don't know what Hatfield does or whether Hatfield has allowed that in the past.
Should look into it.
I would actually, I would actually not have as much of an objection if it were the town's planner because you're looking at the language, but you're also looking at the intent of the language and its potential application. So if you say, oh no, that comma actually should be there and it shouldn't be a semicolon. Okay. Fair enough. But.
Good question.
Yeah. Sorry. I didn't mean to derail us there.
No.
Um, I guess in your, in your example, the comma would be substantive and this calls for non-substantive format, formatting, but that would be subjective.
Right.
Anyway, that's another question.
I think your point about us trying to make some of the vague, in a similar vein of what you just said, like of making some of the stuff that could be more subjective, more, more objective would be helpful for us.
Yes.
But like I, you mentioned the example on page 11 that including the phrase not detrimental to the public convenience or welfare and not impairing, quote, impairing the integrity or character of the district, end quote, is kind of like the way workaround where you can like say, no, I don't want to support this special permit because my definition of public convenience or welfare might be different than yours. But like you also want some of that, do we want some of that flexibility? And so like, where's the balance in that?
Yeah, actually we do.
When I read that, when I read that, I thought the same thing. This is, these are the statements of us as a board, a little bit of flexibility.
But it could also then turn around and bite us.
You're, but you're right. I can, I can see where, I mean, I, I think that this was written so that the board itself can make those decisions without being restricted by the, by the structure of the bylaw. You know what I mean? They need some, some play. If someone comes to us with a project that's distasteful to the neighbors, but it fits all the other criteria, there's no, there's no recourse for us to turn it down.
I think that's where later you talked about how a great move would be to have a description of what each zone, what the essence of each zone really ought to be. And then if you have a clear description of what the zone is for, then it's easier to defensively, I think, talk about what's detrimental. If you've said the purpose of town center business is this, it has these characteristics. Then if you're saying it's not detrimental in our judgment, you can base it on something that you've defined elsewhere, which we don't have right now. Does that make sense?
I feel like you gotta tighten one or the other, right?
Yeah.
You need to get like.
I mean, we should have.
Tighten all the other parts of our zoning bylaws. Tighten all other parts of our zoning bylaws or like fix all these other things. And then we can keep kind of more, some of this vague language.
Exactly.
Or tighten up on this vague language and keep kind of the mess that it is otherwise. Cause I do agree that there's some stuff that is too subjective in our bylaws.
So.
And the legal risk piece is like.
Yeah, exactly.
You brought up zoning and, you know, more clearly. You brought up zoning and, you know, more clearly defining your zoning areas to be able to, and that presumes that, A, the zoning is going to change, stay, or, or, you know, be set and then be established, B, that presumes that we're going to proceed at some point and maintain zones to regulate uses. There are other ways to regulate uses other than just creating parts of town where certain things are allowed and where other things are not, you know? So that's, that's another question. But something I wrote earlier is talking about those uses where there could be the potential, where, where they, they are not otherwise allowed by right, like a house, like a residence, or where there could be the potential for greater disruption. My thought was to establish the use, describe the intent of that section. That's something that you mentioned, to clearly define the intent of any given zone or the intent of any given, you know, set of rules for the, for that use, to establish criteria. That's the rigid measurements. That's the, you must have this much frontage, you must have this much setback, you must maintain a noise level below this, you know? These things that can be measured that are objective, they're not subject to individual opinion. And then third, have required findings. The required findings are, in order to grant a special permit for this kind of use, the planning board must find that, A, B, C. And that's where statements like, you know, that the use is not detrimental to the public convenience or welfare, maybe we need to clarify what that means, but I'm not afraid of having a subjective measure. State courts have consistently upheld decisions of planning boards and zoning boards where the decision was based on criteria that's in the zoning bylaw, but relied on a subjective assessment by the board. They've, they've stayed away from trying to second guess the board, the decision of the planning board or the ZPA, what have you. They've only objected to decisions that were based on something that had nothing to do, that was not established in the bylaw as a criteria. I'm going on a ramble, I apologize for that. But basically, I'm speaking in favor of, of the possibility for subjective assessment of projects, as long as we as a board pay attention to the criteria that we establish in the zoning bylaw.
I like your framing of just like, if it's tighter in one area, you're able to be a little more loose in another, because you can defend where the decision is being made based on what.
Well, and similarly, going back to Lee's point about table of uses, and it's referenced here too, how there's several uses in there that are hyper-specific, like philanthropic or charitable medical facility, and then there's one, the next one is general manufacturing. Like, so we need to look at the table of use in more like a way, that's where I do want a little more vague, not vague, but like bigger buckets of potential ways we can look at stuff.
Categories.
Categories, or like if we move towards like a form-based zoning, which is more impact based, yeah.
Yeah.
Impact-based, which doesn't really, if someone else could explain exactly what, a better way than I can, but it's about what's matching the character of the neighborhood as opposed to saying this use is allowed in this zone. It'd be more relaxed.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that Doug touched on that by defining the, what the zoning, the character of the zoning.
Yeah. Well, and that's where you talk about, you know, not detrimental to the public convenience or won't impair the integrity or character of the district, as long as we define what the character of any given district or zone is.
Right. And does the, does the district apply to the old town or does it apply to different districts within the town?
That, yeah, that, well, I mean, if we're going to basically cut, if we stick with basic two-dimensional zoning, where this area has a certain character, has certain expectations, you know, then, then, yeah, then it would apply to just that. But there's no reason we couldn't, we couldn't apply character to the overall town. The town believes in preserve, you know, we have already done that work, believes in supporting agriculture and maintaining, you know, historic uses and in providing a healthy and safe environment to, for families and seniors and blah, blah, blah down the line. We can do that, but anyway.
Hopeful?
More than you were expecting.
I'll say that. We don't hear our planning boards talk about some of these concepts, so it's, it's welcome.
Is that a good thing?
It is. And we're, we're happy to provide some, you know, either reference or guidance materials if some of these concepts are of greater interest. And we do mention form-based zoning later on, so we can get into that a little bit. But proceeding with the document, the technical review on pages 13 and 15 of that, we're now on page seven of the slide deck that we're showing to the public. Our first assessment of districts, there's ample opportunity to strengthen how the zoning bylaw defines and distinguishes the zoning districts. First by introducing a clear purpose for each district and then ensuring that regulations are in place that help create distinct characteristics, neighborhood characteristics for each. So that can come across in several ways. First by providing a purpose for each district, they're listed in the zoning bylaw with no elaboration or rationale or purpose or intent, just a simple bulleted list.
And just to, to underscore what you mean by districts are, what like someone's property could be zoned for, like, so I was looking at our zoning map.
Zoning districts, yeah.
Zoning district, yeah.
So there are, in the zoning bylaw, there's listed nine, but there's actually eight zoning districts and four overlay districts, two of which are not listed in the establishment of districts section. So there's some confusion there. But this is your rural residential, your outlying residential, your town center, town center business, business district, industrial, light industrial, agricultural districts. Overlaying districts include your floodplain protection, your water supply protection, your riverfront, which I'm curious to know a little bit about.
Me too.
Because it's, it provides very little additional protection to the floodplain, but includes most of the same area of town. There is the fourth quote unquote overlay district. I use that term loosely because it's an optional development regulation and doesn't function as a proper overlay. It's also spot zoned, so that individual parcels or small groupings of parcels have been designated as a mixed use overlay. And that is, that leads us to kind of a general question that we have. How has the mixed use overlay been delineated or determined? Additionally, are any projects or have there been any projects to opt in to those regulations?
Was the mixed use overlay a tail wagging the dog situation where somebody had an idea to do a certain thing at a certain location, but in order, but it wouldn't work under the existing zoning, so they created an overlay district to then bless the use that's been proposed is?
Who knows? That sounds likely, given the history of our zoning map.
Right.
But I think any, well, I also have mixed feelings on over, like, I feel like overlay districts are encouraged, or like maybe, and what I see happening too is like, oh, if you have this overlay district, then you can qualify for this grant money or whatever. And so like, that's another tail wagging the dog, frankly, that I don't necessarily like agree with or necessarily, in a way that it makes our map nice and easy to understand. It complicates things with overlay districts. So if there are ways that we could simplify the zoning map insofar we don't hamstring us from any potential state funds because we don't have these districts, would be great. Or if we only have like one that we required, like the floodplain one, or you know what I'm, you know what I'm trying to say? I don't know if others feel similarly with that. And then the second point around, I'm glad you brought it up, the spot zoning, there is a lot of spot zones in town that we, I think, all have gone on, at least I have gone on record multiple times saying, and I feel like we're in general in grants, that we would like to move away from that and allow those to be pre-existing non-conforming uses and or lot, like uses in that regard.
Yeah, agreed.
Because there's like this business parcel, literally just one parcel surrounded in this rural residential area, like, we should have, when we adopted the map the last time, back in 2003 or whenever it was, we should have made that whole area rural residential and kept that pre-existing non-conforming use.
I think we kind of concluded that when the zoning map was created, it was, its intent was to memorialize the uses that were on any given parcel. It wasn't intended as a way to, it wasn't intended as a statement of, we the town believe this area would be good for these kinds of uses.
And some areas, yes.
Hey, guess what? Fred's had his machine shop there forever, so his parcel can't be just rural residential. We have to zone it as something else, you know? That's.
That's the, that's the reasoning for a lot of little spot zones throughout town that, that are questionable.
I'm not sure that with the number of different spot zones in town, there would be a way to consolidate any of them, you know, other than by, by type of business, not certainly by geography.
Oh, no, you wouldn't do it by geography. You'd just, you'd match whatever, whatever that zone happens to be surrounded by this, we should make that, that. So, and, and that has come up, not just in our 2020, this came up, this is coming up probably in this diagnostic, this came up in all of the 2040 recommendations, this also came up in previous recommendations from previous past documents in the last 20 years that we should move away from the spot zoning. So that, I think, and a lot, frankly, a lot of the issue parcels that we've had are because it's light industrial plopped in the middle of this residential neighborhood.
A long time ago.
Right, and those have been some of the more like thornier things that we've had to deal with, at least in my time here on the board, is because of that legacy of the spot zoning, that's.
So Prospect Treats is a prime example, where there's a business right in the middle of, the, where the welding business is, right in the middle of a.
I don't know what that's zoned.
I don't know what it's zoned either, but, I mean.
But those things are allowed if they were there for a certain amount of time.
Right, and they've been there forever.
Pre-existing non-conforming, okay, there you go.
And we're not trying to, it wouldn't stop people, current businesses that are currently operating there, it would prevent a new and more heavier use frankly, coming in, in the future.
So, one question we have is, do the current zoning districts, the eight base zones, are there instances where they kind of accurately categorize the characteristic of the neighborhood that they're, they are?
Some, yes.
Really?
Yeah, I think the town bus, center business and town center, but like, why would you need two of those? I don't know.
Well, and then the question for, asking for clarification, are you talking about simply the definition or the way the zone is described in the zoning bylaw?
The map.
Or are you talking about the way the zone is applied to certain parts of town and whether they're, they correctly address the?
It's almost all of the above.
Open response.
So I would, I would say that if you've got eight zones in a town as small as Hatfield, where there's few, you know, granted, there's a lot of varying use, but question is whether we need to have eight zones to delineate each kind or class of use, or whether we could simplify that.
Yeah, we've had, we've talked about whether why light industrial and industrial are two separate things.
Yeah, that's, to me, that doesn't make sense.
Back in the, back when this was initially incorporated, like, there was the idea of us bringing an industrial park and next one, that has not materialized, and I think there might even be a shift away from that thinking. I mean, manufacturing is, does that happen in America anymore?
It does.
Tariffs are bringing back.
Yeah.
Anyway.
It does.
Yes, and, but not to like, and things like industrial parks are not.
No, we're not going to get an auto manufacturer moving into Hatfield. But there are a number of businesses that where the activity on their property I would consider to be of an industrial use.
Right. Do we need a light industrial and industrial? Right, is my point, probably not.
Yeah, I think that within, within the zone of industrial, you could establish criteria, you establish a procedure, a site plan review, and then you put in the, you know, required findings.
Yeah, the other piece too, another thing that came out of the Hatfield 2040 comprehensive committee was recommending creating like other center, or not tent centers, but like villages that exist outside of like just right here where we're sitting, which is considered like town center. And I think there's opportunity there to have like town centers, what, maybe it's remaining that zone, villages or something like that, like whatever, however that looks. And there's, we could look at doing those in a couple of different places in town, I think.
I had a thought about that and about how that could be applied in, because if, if we were to say, okay, intersection of West Street and Depot Road, we're going to create a new village center there, what if the people there don't want it? What if the people there don't like the idea? Or on the other hand, what if the, the historic district up on River Road and those, those folks are like, yeah, we really want to have a little store right here, but we don't create a village center there, which means it's harder to put one there. Perhaps village centers like historic districts could be nominated by the people who are there, and if a certain percentage or a certain, you know, minimum number of residents within an area say, we want to be nominated as, as a village center, then they could ask for an overlay zone to be applied, which would then be more permissive for commercial or office use.
So then what happens when that one person who wants to do that is confronted by 15 neighbors who don't want that? Then we saw it play itself out here.
Then that, well, no, it, it wouldn't be somebody saying, I want to put a certain use on this property, it would have to come from the whole.
The neighborhood.
Group of the neighborhood. It would be on them to build consensus.
Right.
Before the zone.
So, so what percentage, what percentage equals consensus? So if three people say, I don't want this thing here, period, and there's 15 people that say they do, who says the three people are wrong?
Yeah, who's, yeah, who's voting? Does it have to go to town meeting?
Yeah, right. Who's determining the, the efficacy of that little town center or little, you know, neighborhood thing, when maybe there's people that don't want that? Maybe there's people that don't want their privacy infringed upon by it being called something different and people treating it differently.
Stores and cafes and.
Yeah, so, I mean, we saw it play out here just the other day, we just saw it play out here, when 25 people showed up against something.
The other, yeah, and similarly, giving it to the neighborhood or the community to do, when, yes, we want those people to have agency and like have, be able to give input on that, but like, they're not, they're only thinking about their neighborhood and maybe not like the best interest of the town.
Right.
And they don't have, like, we're looking at the map holistically and making recommendations, because then you see like this, if you look at currently how five and 10 is zoned, for example, a huge, like a chunk of it is rural residential. One of the recommendations from 2040 is to completely relook at that and making that all at least business, or like a little bit step above rural residential, whatever that may be in the, in the future. But it was because the neighborhood, or some of those people in the neighborhood really did not want to see it zoned a certain way, and they lobbied at town meeting or whenever where that map was made, and they made it so that it's not, and now we're kind of seeing that play out now, like, with people coming here asking us to rezone their properties or like, hey, I want to do this on this, it's over residential, it's on five and 10. So like.
Right.
I don't, I don't know how to square, like, I agree with you in theory, but like, how, right, like, how do you, one, make it in the best interest of the town, in the best interest of the neighborhood, which might be at odds with each other.
Absolutely.
Well, you know, thinking about West Street, you know, five and 10, there are people who live there, there are people who have houses there, and there are people, as we saw in, in North Hatfield, people who long, multi-generational families living on the same property, working the land as farmers, strongly objected to a, a new use that's coming in that was completely consistent with the established zoning. But they were still, they still felt it to be something that was completely abhorrent to everything that they felt the area should be. Right or wrong, agree or not, I think that's kind, those kind of conflicts are endemic to the concept of zoning overall. You know, any kind of formal zoning or any kind of formal planning procedure, there will be detractors. I think it comes with the territory. We can have longer conversations about that idea, but anyway.
And then a lot, I don't know if you noticed too, though, a lot of our zoning is restricted by the environment of our, of the town, like our floodplain bylaws, like the floodplain by the environment of our, of the town, like, ours floodplain bylaws, like, the floodplain is expanding with, with updated FEMA maps, that was immediately restricts like what can happen, and that's essentially town business center, or what we would consider that, and like, if there was another village up in Bradstreet area, like, that would be another potential like restriction because of the flood, like, and then we have wetlands basically along the 91 corridor area, where we would want commercial develop anyway, and that's also where our drinking water supply area is, on the very north part of, of five and 10 and up, and so like, we're very restricted by what we can actually develop, I feel like it might even be, where, where can we actually develop would be like a question, and then where do we want to develop would be the next question, because I think the environment in itself just automatically like creates very small pockets that would be, one, amenable and, two, doable.
Well, it's, you have to ask yourself, you know, what kind of development are we soliciting? What kind of development do we want to encourage? All development is not equal, all development doesn't have the same physical impacts or the same neighborhood impacts, and that's where, you know, we have to have bigger conversations about that, but.
Yeah, like, I think, you know, we're all pretty much in agreeance too, that our 200-foot frontage requirement and basically like an acre, give or take, of land to build a single-family home.
Yep.
Is, is, is much, it's too much, and we don't want to just take a one-off approach to town meeting, we want to look at it holistically and like how that could then impact other things and calculations and things that go put into it. Like our open space development bylaw, we have zero frontage requirements for that now, for tho, for those lots, in order to try to create more affordable housing. I don't think we would want to go to that extreme for an update, but you know what I'm saying, is we, we are open to being more relaxed to creating more affordable lowercase a homes, and also affordable homes, capital A.
Minimum lot size and setbacks are a blunt instrument when it comes to zoning.
Yeah. And we're open to changing those, but in the spirit of looking at all the, how that impacts other calculations and things that, that come with that, looking at the rest of the zoning. Anyway, got a little off topic. The zoning map is my, is where I like, would like to see some help with that, so, thank you.
Just the last question, and I think we, we spoke to some details of it, but just as, as the zoning bylaw section pertaining to districts is rather limited, and there's a desire for kind of an examination of the zoning map, what types of analysis are you looking for specifically? Beyond general types of data points like land coverage or number of parcels per district, are you looking for those instances of, you know, how many outlying spot zones are there?
Let me ask you a question, because zoning, I always felt, and especially if you look at our zoning map, if you look at it very closely, there's lots of different colors mixed in in a variety of ways, we've been talking about parcels being individually zoned, separate from their, from the abutting, or the abutting to the abutting parcels. I always felt that if you took that map and then put it at the far end of the room, so you can't see those details, that's what the zoning map should look like, those tiny little dots of color should simply go away. To me, that would be the first thing that I'd like to do, is to make the zoning more consistent and more congress, is that the right word? Probably not, but just internally, because, so each zone contains only one type of use, generally. But is there an established practice somewhere where, where you would have, I guess you'd call it a neutral zone between zones, where it's given that with, you know, you define the boundary between one zone and the next, but any property within, let's say, 300 feet of that boundary may be used for any purpose allowed in either zone?
So, you get, you, you open up a can of worms, is 300 feet, right, is 100 feet, right, is 1,000 feet, right?
Maybe the diagram that shows how we measure from door to door, or whatever.
Is that going to impact me by doing that? And if so, if it's going to impact me, I don't want it. And you're going to hear that, you're going to hear that loud and clear here when you start doing stuff like this. You know, I, I just foresee, that's a can of worms that.
But that's how you, that's an easier thing, pill to swallow potentially than having, well, I want this to stop at my property line versus the next person's property line by like, giving this buffer zone, if you will.
Right.
Could be, which is interesting.
But who decides the buffer zone and where it's applied?
Well, that's the whole point of updating a map in general.
So, so then maybe you spin it around, you basically say, so if, if this is your line between one zone and the next, and over here, factories are allowed and over here they aren't, and that means within 300 feet of that line, it's not an allowed use, the factory isn't allowed by, right, you have to get a special permit, be, because you want to take these people, these boundary owners' opinions into consideration, but at the same time, now you risk obstructing potential development that wants to go in the correct zone.
Absolutely. Why is it right for heaven, not for me? You're going to hear that a hundred, a hundred times.
Somewhat arbitrary.
Right, right.
But you have to argue that it's not arbitrary, like, for example, again, going back to our zoned industrial, light industrial land, most of it, it could never be developed just due to the wetlands that are on the parcel. And I don't know why that, like, was that something that, so that's why you have to look at like all of the things when we consider rezoning.
Because, because prior to what, the 1980s, wetlands weren't a thing, people would fill in swamps, I need some dry land, okay, I'm going to dig some trenches, I'm going to fill in the center area, now I can build on it.
Right, and so, in 2003-ish, when we adopted this new map and these new zoning bylaws, I don't know, was that a consideration of, hey, let's look and see where the wetlands are, does this make sense? Like, so when, when you're asking about like analysis, looking at an analysis of the zoning map, I would like to keep that in mind, because like, like I mentioned, like even some of our watershed or protection area exists in the north end of five and 10, so we couldn't even develop that part anyway.
Okay, so, maybe I'm going to say exactly what you just said, talking about the analysis of our current zoning map and how it might be modified, taking into consideration the underlying quality of the land, treating lone, land that's zoned industrial, but that's also wetland, that's not industrial land, that's crap, that's unusable land, because there's no feasible way for it to be developed.
And so, on the flip side too, like.
We need to know that.
And on the flip side, I would like to see prime agricultural soils and locally important soils.
Yep.
Which is a new designation, that Hatfield was the first community to have locally designated soils.
What does that refer to?
So like, for example.
Prime farmland.
Prime farmland, like.
Prime agricultural soils.
Right, so that is just looking at the quality of the soil, it doesn't take into account like, this has been a blueberry farm for generations, it might not have prime agricultural soil, but it's been a, it's been blueberry farms, I'm just making an example.
No, okay, fair.
And, so a partial part of that was on North Hatfield Road and Straits Road area, there's, it's not prime agricultural soil, but it's locally important soil, and that it's been farmed for generations. That designation has, our previous chair of the planning board, who has also have worked for American Farmland Trust, had brought that and got that, a certain type of soil, I forget the name of it, that exists in North Hatfield, in parts of North Hatfield, Franklin, North Hatfield Road, Straits Road, has it designated as soil of local importance, which then opens up opportunities for preservation. So those are the other pieces that you'd want to look at, those are probably arguably the parcels people would say, oh, look at, that's to, to develop, but then other people would be like, no, that's what we should conserve, and that's the tension I think we're going to get at, and we should be thinking about some of the zoning is where should we be promoting some of this development slash promoting conservation, and what is restricted completely by the floodplain, by this, that we should, that is de facto preserved and that kind of thing. Right?
The, 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 the two-pronged, or the two kind of primary motivations, to increase housing stock, make housing more affordable, and also to preserve important land for agricultural or natural conservation.
Somewhat of an oxymoron.
Well, it, it, they're in conflict with each other.
Yeah, definitely.
Basically, it's, it's, it's a tug of war.
You can't do both at the same time in the same place.
But that's.
And that's the.
It's a long conversation to have.
And that's a big part of our comprehensive plan, saying that we want, we want both. And having tough conversations about, well, where do you?
I want a pony, I want a boat, I want a pony on a boat, I mean, okay, how much, yeah.
Yeah. And so those are going to be, I think, the sticky parts of the, of the zoning map and what we.
Yeah.
Whatever we pass.
So, back to what you're looking for, our overlay districts, wetlands, prime agricultural soils, locally important soils, riverfront or floodplain, looking at our current zoning map, the blurry current zoning map, with all of those things taken into consideration.
And also.
That would be a good analysis.
And us open to simplifying.
Yeah, but, and then.
The type, the number of zones.
Yeah, yeah. Simplifying the type of zoning, understanding, you know, creating zones where there's a little bit more allowed in each, little bit more flexibility for uses, yeah.
I know that there's like a lawsuit going on in Shrewsbury, I think, right now with the Coles lumber property, because.
Still?
Maybe not still, but they're around the, sort of like, the solar project that Coles was arguing was in compliance with basically like state rules around not restricting solar development, and then Shrewsbury was pushing back against this because it required like mass clearing of forests, and obviously all of our drinking water, most of it comes from surface water, so I'm wondering if there's a way to analyze in the same way, maybe expanding like a watershed protection zone in West Hatfield, that could help us with maybe something like that in the future, where it's like, oh, you're mandated to allow forest clearing in this area to make way for solar. Does that make sense? I'm not describing what the lawsuit was really like accurately, but I know that that was the tension there, was that Coles was able to argue that it's in compliance with like state energy goals, and the town was really reticent to allow for that amount of clearing.
Does the town rely on an open reservoir?
Surface water in the west, yeah.
Really?
Yep.
Really?
That's what it says in the USRP. We do have wells, but.
There are a couple wells, and then also we have two wells.
We do actually have a reservoir.
Oh, we do, there's no question, up in a mountain.
So clearing in the west is also a problem.
How we doing?
We're doing great, we still have a bit to get through.
Okay, yep.
Maybe speed, speed through some of these.
Okay.
This, this next one, administration procedures, this one is, I think, fairly straightforward. Really, the, the identified issue here is that there are, there are two sections that both deal with procedures in different ways. The first is section five, titled Special Regulations, which is focused on development review procedures primarily, and it also includes some non, like procedure-focused sections, regulations around parking and signs. And then section eight focuses on enforcement-related procedures, so enforcement by the building inspector, et cetera. And the, the overall suggestion for this section is just to consolidate those into one administration section, so that you don't have to go between those two sections to understand the full procedural scope of the development process.
My thoughts are anything that has to do with a procedure by which a person applies for a permit or applies for some relief, by which that application is processed, by which it's reviewed, by which it's, in my opinion, that should be out of the bylaw, that should be a separate procedure document that the planning board can review on its own from time to time, because it really is just their rules for how they do business. Regarding enforcement, I would want to coordinate with the town administrator to make sure that noncriminal disposition, which I think has to be encoded in the general bylaw, right? Am I wrong about that? Noncriminal ticketing, noncriminal, in other words, fines for penalties, where, I mean, that has to be kind of comprehensive townwide, we'd want to make sure that that's in the general bylaw as well as referred to in the zoning bylaw. But, and I know you have, those have to be in the bylaw, penalties for violations, fair enough. Anything that has to do with a building inspector? As zoning enforcement officer, I get, but we don't regulate his actions or his work, right?
The other way, our bylaws are currently set up, it's like, we approve the, generally special permits and site plan approval, and it's up to the zoning enforcement officer to enforce our bylaws.
Right.
Sure.
The less, well, I don't know, I don't want to look at that more before I say it much more. Those are just my thoughts on that.
And I would just like look to like, what do other communities do, or that kind of thing, that'd be interesting to me. And also, just to name it, all of the suggestions you put in the district section, I agree with.
Okay, are there any other thoughts on the administration section? Okay, if not, we can move on to the incomplete or outdated provisions. This is a fairly lengthy section, so I will kind of go over it at a relatively high level here. So there are some provisions that are deemed potentially incomplete, or maybe just could, could be fleshed out a little further. They relate to topics like special permit procedures and criteria, table of uses, mobile homes and recreational vehicles, I mean, with that one in particular, the identified issue is, is that they are explicitly prohibited across all districts, which is again, kind of alluded to, or maybe explicitly stated in exclusionary zoning section, but also kind of restated here. Various procedures and criteria are, I just at a fairly high level, they, they don't go into a lot of detail. Accessory uses and structures could be defined further with, you know, just, just potential, just addressing all potential accessory uses and structures, making that a little bit clearer for folks as they review the document. Similarly, for nonconforming uses and structures, they could be, they could define the different types of nonconformities, specify the allowed continuation, alteration, expansion of each type, set clear standards, et cetera, et cetera, as listed in the review here. For solar energy systems. Yeah, it could, it, the provisions need to be, or could be updated, need to be updated to reflect the recent changes in misuse of general law, zoning cannot prohibit or unreasonably regulate solar energy systems except for necessary to protect public health, safety, or welfare. And then there are just some, some suggestions about specific updates that could be made, such as defining different scales and configurations, allowing different things, refining, special permit criteria, and establishing some clearer design and landscaping standards, and decommissioning standards. Regarding signs, there is a dedicated sign bylaw, as I mentioned earlier, that's in section 5.9. Those, the regulations could be improved slightly, or, or just, you know, given more specificity by defining the different types and configurations of signs, setting, you know, stronger standards or more objective standards for specifics around signs, and providing a more content-neutral definition of what a sign is as well. And then there are some general suggestions, so I can read through those quickly. Comparing use and dimensional requirements with what exists on the ground to identify potential mismatches and preexisting nonconformities, reviewing definitions for consistency with state law and court rulings, that's very general suggestion, reviewing parking, landscaping, and lighting provisions for consistency with current industry standards, ensuring that grandfathering provisions are consistent with misuse of general law, and considering removing or updating any outdated or enforceable provisions, such as vague performance standards and overly restrictive uses.
There was a lot there.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot there, so.
Do you know off the top of your head, the, the minimum array size that the state's renewable energy site, siting committee would start to take effect?
I do not honestly, no.
That's going to be something when we go to. Right, that whole solar energy system, we're going to need to know that.
Yeah.
We're also going to really need some education on exactly what the state does.
Right.
Because they basically upend of the apple cart when it comes to what they call small scale, but certain arrays up to 25 megawatt.
I think that's accurate, but.
Which, I think I, I did the math once, that's something like 40 acres of solar.
It's large.
It's massive.
Yes.
It's, it's one, that's where there's a lot of development at the state level, we're still wrapping our head.
Yeah.
Around the new regulations.
Yeah.
We are being consulted in terms of some model bylaw language from, which, Department, DO, yeah.
Department of Energy Resources, yeah.
There we go. So, we are keeping that in mind as we present some recommendations moving forward, but unfortunately, happy that in all communities. happened in all communities in Western Mass particularly are really scratching their heads and muttering some expletives, I think, at the new solar siding regulations. So we will provide best guidance as we have it available.
So the question, like, what will be most helpful for you is out of these identified, which two or three topics are highest priorities for us out of these incomplete or outdated provisions?
So.
Well, it's funny because like, like all of this. Yeah, because it's kind of talked like our table of use, which kind of goes coincides with the zoning map and what we, what zones we consider. I think that'll all be, that will have to be touched. Special permit criteria is something that like, eh, we could do if we wanted to do that on our own. That doesn't seem like it could be that contentious if we wanted to do it as a one off.
So that's, again, going back to my earlier notes, the idea of for any given use or for any given belief or action, we should establish the intent. We should establish the baseline criteria, and then we should establish the necessary findings. And I think for just a special permit, there's going to be a baseline of criteria. And that's the, is consistent with the general provisions of the zoning bylaw and is not disruptive to the immediate or neighborhood or the town as a whole. Those are basically the only criteria really, or necessary findings.
Yeah, but then like their point about floodplain overlay requires a finding of exceptional hardship. Yeah, there's certain things there.
No, right, no, right, absolutely. As you get deeper and as it gets more specific, you come up with additional criteria and additional findings.
I appreciate you calling out the mobile homes piece because it is pretty classist and frankly, you know, it is an affordable way for people to live. And it's something that I think we should be open to thinking about. But also, again, that exists within the table of use, I think, a lot of also. So that's something we could look at related to that.
Is there, is there any activity at the state level in regard to manufactured homes that you're aware of?
But I know that in the ADU protected use, there's some provisions about manufactured ADUs. And I think it's, it's something that building technologies have evolved to the point where it's, it needs to be revisited by all communities.
Sure, agreed.
One question I did want to pause and include at this point is I know that there was a general bylaw passed at annual town meeting this year regarding stormwater management. So I was just curious about how does that impact the existing section seven? If that has now created some incompleteness or outdatedness that we want to follow up on and or offer guidance at this point, or is it still undetermined?
I think we're moving towards page 19 or 20.
So it was, okay, we were wondering about it when it was presented to us. It was out of compliance because we didn't regulate sedimentation. I think we only regulated flow rates. So it was something like pretty granular about, because we do have like pretty thorough, as we've talked about, pretty thorough stormwater regulations, but it was like something very specific. So now I think we have the funding is available to modify that stormwater bylaw. And we're supposed to have the funding to have legal assistance with that. So I'm not really sure how that fits into your work. But I think, does that seem accurate to what you recall?
My recollection of that, the general bylaw regarding stormwater is that it became a necessity to pass, or at least in terms of the select board, it became a necessity to pass that sometime mid to late April.
Because FEMA was.
And have ready to go for June town meeting because it was, yeah, it was a response to a FEMA letter saying, oh, your stormwater bylaw doesn't do this. The select board took it on themselves to jam through a whole new section of general bylaw to make the corrections. It was only, we only had cursory review within maybe two or three weeks of town meeting. I did not like the process whatsoever. I don't think stormwater bylaws belong in the general bylaw. I think it's still a land use regulation, and that's where it belongs. If we can just simply modify or amend what we have to make it consistent with current FEMA requirements, then we're better off. But either that or the planning board could pass some rules about speeding. See how folks like it, but anyway.
It would be good to, I think, be in touch about this when we have more clarity because I think it was kind of, as you said, it was very rapid. We had to adopt it pretty quickly, and I think we should talk to Andrew about what supposedly the next steps are for now that we have adopted it. What does it mean?
Another topic that I think is helpful in that we've been using a lot of our town council's time, and so if we could clear this up with our zoning bylaws, that'd be great, on accessory uses and structures. Clarifying some of that, I think, would be helpful because it is very not, it's very small section, as you mentioned. I think also making it the home occupation piece is something that's been we have, something we have the appetite for in being more permissive or generous and allowing some of those things to happen. Because right now, it's like a special permit process. I've never had, since I've been on the board since late 2018, never had anyone come before us to for a home occupation business. I know they exist. So if we could get people, you know, make it easier and not have to go through a special permit to do that, that would be helpful. And helping it be clear in that regard, I think that would also be helpful. Bella and I have actually talked about having like a an event. Yeah, yeah. Do you qualify, do you operate in these things? Like, come get your home business out of a gray area. So I think there's appetite to allow for some of that in some potentially rural residential areas.
I think that you might have people be hesitant to come forward when they're not sure their business is going to be able to be able to be approved. So they're not going to rock the boat and say, can you come approve my business? I'm just going to keep doing it without saying anything.
Right, well, that's why it's going to be like, do you meet these X criteria? Come. And hopefully that they will.
As long as it's a no faults process, you know. We just want, you know, come in, it's a simple visit, you will be granted a permit for your business.
As long as you're not promising to.
Well, either way, if they're gonna do it, they've been doing it, they're gonna keep doing it. We might as well know about it so at least we can put them on the assessors list.
Right.
You know.
Anyway. And then also, yeah, questions about the accessory uses versus accessory structures as referenced in our bylaws, which makes things complicated.
Any other thoughts on this one? We'll move on to missing topics.
People have strong feelings about signs, so. I don't, I've only had it come up once as a potential issue, so like where people wanted more signage.
I'd love to see what other towns are doing and what works, what doesn't regarding signs.
But I don't know if that would be like a priority of all these.
Definitely.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay, moving on to missing topics. So these are really suggestions for things that the town might want to consider, including or at least thinking about including in zoning bylaw. So the first one is inclusionary zoning. As you know, this requires that new market rate residential developments include a percentage of affordable units as they construct the development. So currently, the zoning bylaw does encourage creation of affordable housing through an optional density bonus and within the open space development and mixed use development bylaws. But inclusionary zoning would be a step, a step beyond that to have a mandatory requirement for set asides of affordable units. The next.
That is outside of like whole stack development, correct? Which is outside of our zoning bylaws. Is there ways that we can decentivize a traditional subdivision bylaw and incentivize something like an open space development bylaw and or inclusionary zoning?
We just change the regulations for the.
We've talked about that, but like, yeah, how can we do that?
You're saying have like more of a stick as well as a carrot.
Yeah, the next, the next.
I would love to see the open space development bylaw happen, isn't it? Density and preservation at the same time.
So again, we just take the requirements from the open space development, make that our subdivision regulation.
Can we do that?
Sure. Why not?
I would love to be able to do that, but I feel like that we were guided not, that wasn't the case.
You could do that without going to town meeting.
Right, because it's just a subdivision bylaws can just come to us.
Once it, once it's approved, it simply has to be public hearing, it gets approved, then it has to go to the registry deeds, has to be recorded or something, I think. Subdivision regulations, I think, but yeah.
I'm looking to do that. All right, continue.
Okay, the next suggestion is to provide just a more comprehensive regulatory framework around short term residential units, like Airbnb, for example. So the bylaw currently defines short term rental as a rental for a term of less than 28 consecutive days. But that's in the context of prohibiting the use for accessory dwelling units. So that leaves a bit of a gap around conditions where this kind of commercial use could be permitted in principal dwellings. And it just could be, could be just defined a little further and made a little clearer for folks.
We've like said, I mean, I've said before that it hasn't been an issue yet. Like, if you look, there's not like a ton of properties in Hatfield being Airbnb. But it's something we would keep an eye on it if it became an issue, it's something we would want to do. But like, I also don't really want to take the reactive approach, so I don't know if anyone feels strongly about.
I'd want to talk with administration because if we're putting in regulations for short term rentals, I'd want to make sure that the administration is talking about, you know, assessing the local option tax, you know, that sort of thing.
And who's enforcing it?
Who's enforcing it? You got to have border health as well as fire department inspections on an annual basis or a number of things, which it's bigger than just whether we allow it or not.
There. Is that something then that we want them to explore currently?
No.
It's a low priority.
Low priority.
Yeah, we've got to have the conversations locally first, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. So the next, the next suggestion is to have what has been brought up a few times already, village center slash forum based zoning. So currently, the bylaws, you all know, lacks forum based zoning and sort of dedicated village center district that is really pedestrian oriented in design. There are some some existing overlay zones and zones that kind of start to approach this concept, but don't, don't quite meet it. So the suggestion is really just to consider focusing on that to allow for village center districts that are pedestrian oriented and potentially forum based zoning, moving away from the sort of Euclidean use based zoning model, in some cases at least.
What you just touched on in the end, definitely, I like the idea of moving away from just dimensional regulations as, as ways to regulate uses. I think that if we're talking about creating an overlay or a forum based zone that creates walkable little village centers, I'd want to make sure that we're doing it in coordination with the public works and the administration, because they're talking about moving into complete streets. They're talking about, you know, establishing a plan for that. We'd want to make sure the two are consistent. So if we establish a village center in the Depot Road area, for example, we'd want to make sure it's also listed in the complete streets implementation plan as being an area where, okay, anytime we do anything there, we're putting in sidewalks. We're going to integrate crosswalks. We're going to make sure folks can get to the bus line, that kind of thing. So again, coordination, but yeah, I'd like the idea.
Yeah, and it also achieves what the comprehensive plan is pushing us towards. And so I think that would be one of the prior, something to look at when we're looking at the zoning map and table of use and where that would fit in.
Yep.
So yes, to that one.
Great. The next is battery energy storage systems. I mean, essentially, the issue here is that there aren't provisions to define or regulate the siting of battery energy storage systems as of right now in the zoning bylaw. And that just leaves the town open or unprepared to review those projects.
If it's not there, is it like, oh, we can't do it or?
Well, again, my question is going to be, what's the state gonna take on themselves correctly?
Yeah, the state now does require some percentage of battery energy storage capacity at new solar installations. So they're going to be present.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something you incorporate in solar or make something completely separate?
It can be done both ways. I've seen it as, you know, a subset of a broader solar installation bylaw, and some communities have just put it separately. Because there is potential to just have a strictly battery storage facility.
Man, it's a little problem in Springfield.
Yeah.
Westfield as well.
It is facing many, many applications.
Landford is?
Yeah, they.
Well, actually, no, that makes sense because there's an ever source node there. Yeah, yeah.
And it's caused turmoil amongst the planning board and town.
I would, speaking as the guy who's sitting in the office in West Hampton, I'd love a battery energy storage system to come to my town for the tax benefit.
Right.
But the fact that there could be a fire at one of them that could poison the aquifer scares the hell out of myself and a lot of people. And I think that again, it might be out of our hands if the state takes over the licensing and citing of those things. They're going to basically disregard local zoning. We won't have a say in it. So knowing what the state is doing, to me, that's what's necessary for actually both of those items, the battery energy storage system and the comprehensive renewable energy, the next item. Understanding what the state is planning on doing is going to drive whether or not we, you know, how we approach those.
Yeah, because otherwise we'll be in the same boat, you know, updating our ADU law after then updated again the next year.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Yep, that makes a lot of sense. Well, the only other remaining item is when you touched on comprehensive renewable energy, essentially addressing alternative sort of anticipated energy production beyond just solar, so geothermal, wind, et cetera. But yeah, as you noted, yeah, that should be done in sort of collaboration with understanding what the state is doing. Okay, so that's, those are the missing topics. So it's, I'd like to hear just, I think we've got a sense, but maybe to just be explicit, which of those topics seem like the most pressing, the most interesting to the board?
The, from what I think we said, village center forum based and inclusionary, correct?
Yeah, those are first priorities.
Okay, great. Great, and yeah, and that kind of, that answers the second question too. Perfect. All right. So we can move on unless anybody has any thoughts at the end for missing topics to review the exclusionary zoning language. So they, I don't, this is a lot to run through as well, but to keep it at a high level, some of the issues that were identified were, one of the primary ones is limited housing diversity by rights. Essentially, there are some significant hurdles placed on the development of multifamily housing. So multifamily housing, which is defined in the bylaws, three to six dwelling units, requires a special permit with site plan approval in all districts where it's permitted. That just, of course, adds a lot of, you know, time and difficulty to that sort of development. It makes it more uncertain whether or not it will even be possible. So that can just, of course, discourage the production, heavily discourage the production of multifamily housing. So that's something to keep in mind. There are very sort of large lot sizes as a minimum lot area. It is 45,000 square feet to 60,000 square feet for single family homes in most districts. That just requires a substantial portion of land for a single family home, which, you know, of course, just raises the cost of building those properties, raises the cost of purchasing them, makes them more exclusionary, harder to afford for the average person.
And frankly, makes more farmland. Mowable lawn.
That too. Yeah, absolutely.
A mowable?
Mowable lawn.
Mowable.
Like grass.
Oh, mowable.
Sure, sorry.
I'm thinking of two syllables you were using, great, okay. Mowable lawn, yes, great.
This next one, we have already really touched on that there are some optional bonuses for affordable housing, but there is not an inclusionary zoning requirement, so I won't dig into that again, but just note that as again. Next, there are some potential barriers to, for group homes. This really. This really is focused on the bylaw's definition of a family, which is not more than three persons not related. So.
Can't do.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that is, that is a concern for a number of reasons. But one of those reasons is that it creates a barrier to group homes. So, yeah, it's not, not, not ideal, I would say. There's, again, also, as mentioned earlier, a restriction on mobile homes, a complete prohibition, actually, which, which should be addressed or could be addressed, because, as we all know, mobile homes provide really important resource for affordable housing. And then some, some general suggestions here at the bottom, which I believe are really just kind of digging into more detail about the things that I've mentioned. Just reviewing those dimensional standards, making permitting requirements for different types of housing a little, a little easier. Eliminating any provisions that treat housing differently based on the type of occupant. Monitoring housing production and demographic data to ensure zoning is not creating disparate impacts. And promoting affordable housing options through a range of strategies. So, that, that is that section. So, it sounds like at this point, we, I feel like we have a pretty good understanding of the board's sort of thoughts on this. But I just, I guess I would just open it up to answer these prompt questions or just your thoughts on, on that section.
My answers, no and yes.
No and yes.
Trying to be succinct, I know it's. No and yes.
Yes, no and yes, got it.
I think for each of the five bullet points that you listed in the PowerPoint, I think there's work to do on all of them. And I think that if we're going to try to achieve housing goals, especially affordable housing goals, we need to reexamine everything. That is going to be an uphill climb socially or locally, because there's going to be a lot of folks who are going to be resistant to the idea of different types of housing solutions. But I don't see any way around it, and I think it's on us to pursue it if we can.
Yep, and yes. Yeah, making it looser for the houses, allowing multifamily houses be, is like, duh, we should be doing that, I think. I think that the spirit of it was not to have some giant big old complex come in, which I understand why we only have, allow up to six dwellings in one unit. We don't allow for the big, you know.
Apartment complexes.
Complex to come in to town. I don't, I wouldn't go so far to say that that's something that the town would want, but taking our, I don't know. Depending. But I think loosening what we currently allow is the way forward right now. And reducing lot size requirements, frontage requirements, that kind of thing. But like I said, I, I want to look at it holistically and like how that impacts other calculations and, and things around what then could, you know, other pieces of the zoning.
I don't see we're getting anywhere without it.
Yeah, reducing lot sizes could also be part of, of the, of getting back to the character of the districts and the simplification there.
Yeah, because most homes in Hatfield are, do not have that frontage requirement and, and/or the lot size requirements, so.
A question to run by the legal people, I don't expect that you know the answer. Can, or can there be a provision in a zoning that would allow for multi-dwelling structures? And I'm thinking more than four or five units, 20, 30 units, multi-unit structures, if ownership, if they were, if they were separately owned.
Like a condo.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the school across the street.
Yep.
Those are all condos. Those eight apartments, 10, 12 apartments, but they're all condos.
I think there's six, because that's what we allow. Yeah, that's all we allow.
So, wow, okay, a big building for only six units.
Six, that was the rules.
Right, but if, if someone came up and said, I've got these, this plan for 16 units of housing, they're all going to be within one structure, but they're all going to be conduised to need ownership. And we've talked about this before, ownership creates an incentive for that person to get involved in the community. It results in a longer term, more invested resident, and there's a value to that. So, the question is, could a zoning bylaw allow greater numbers of dwelling units in a structure depending on ownership? I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I'd like to.
And a structure and on a parcel.
I also feel like the housing production plan aspect of this, like, they might recommend in typical housing production plans that you like try to encourage the full range of housing options, including rentals, and that you're not like biasing towards ownership in like a really blatant way when like access is an issue. So, maybe we could incentivize or have like mixed, like summer rentals, summer ownership.
Or like a mixed blend, if there's a blend.
Yeah, if, if a minimum number are intended to be owned separately owned.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to all kinds of ideas.
That's best practice too, is to have mixed, and I don't mean mixed use, I mean affordable units mixed with market rate, mixed with high, like, the best practice for like a community is to have all of those together and not put all the affordable units in this lot way over here around, but nothing, but like having a mixed.
Right.
Use, mixed affordability and access all near each other.
I guess I would ask, like, as we're doing the housing production plan along, you know, parallel this timeline with you wrapping this up, like, how, what would be the most productive way for us to like consult with you about how this should steer the housing production plan or vice versa?
Yeah, that's a good question, we might have to circle back to that.
We could have a meeting about that, potentially.
Obviously, they want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, overall, we're open to all this as long as it matches the character of the, like, the community and that kind of thing.
Another thing I heard in a, I was in a meeting, I was just listening in on a housing meeting in East Hampton, and they were focusing on like any appearance of the phrase rural character that they felt wasn't like super clearly defined. They were trying to come up with like a better way of saying that instead of overly using. Kind of like, they were also talking about family in that discussion, and I just, I thought that was really compelling.
Especially rural character, in my experience, and typically, people don't really even know, or they don't have a shared definition of what that even is, so, yeah.
Exactly, it's like the more subjective stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can define it, it's a lot harder to do so. Yeah, but it could be defined in ways other than that. I mean, it could, you know. A majority of the, you know, a certain percentage, majority of the land being left to be natural or undisturbed or open space.
Looking into like the scenic roads.
Access to sky, access to open air. You know, there's, there's ways to create the sense of a rural community.
Without it being exclusionary.
Without calling it a rural community or rural character of a.
Exactly, I think that's what they're trying to drill down to. And then it's like, well, if people mean like rolling open fields, can we get like a scenic byway designation? And then have that be protected road rather than limiting like lot sizes.
Right.
Things like this, but.
Rural character to me means less lot sizes, more the character of the homes and the community. But anyway, yeah, each, each their own.
Case in point.
There was, there was, there's one road, I don't know if it's Hatfield or if it's Whately. But you go along, you go along, there's fields on both sides, there's fields on both sides, and then there's a side road. And on that side road, there are a number of houses. But if you're traveling along the, along River Road, you look out, you see fields for the most part. You don't see the, you don't focus on the houses that are on the side road. That might be a zoning mechanism to allow for a higher-density residential zoning while maintaining the rural character.
Or like a lot of those, the co-op housing that you see in like North Hampton and then Amherst, it's like the way that the houses are situated in the layout. It's like, they often don't have views of each other, like you can't see it from the road. It maintains like this screened vibe that maybe allows for rural character, even if it's densely developed.
That's going to be.
Can I interject? Are we done with you guys?
I think there's one, there, last.
Yeah.
That's just to discuss the next steps.
Great.
There will be recommendations that come out of the diagnostic.
Sounds like there might be a lot of recommendations.
There might be a lot, we've started to populate it just based on kind of standard recommendations and what we've already identified. I don't think any of those have been removed from the list from our initial conversation. And there may be additional recommendations to include. Typically, we put it into two categories, kind of the short-term, which is really related to the document itself, things that the planning board can take on and bring to town meeting to make it more consistent or user-friendly, kind of modernize the document itself. The longer-term suggestions are some of those new topics or big amendments that require some engagement with the public, maybe, you know, a year or two to educate and build consensus amongst neighbors. So, that's just kind of what we'll be working on. We welcome feedback, feel free to reach out directly or direct your feedback to Bella, who can pour it along. Again, we're hoping to get this element of the DLT project done by October. So, we're happy to come back in September. We're happy to push that and come back first of October if need be. But just to get the project, this element done so that we can proceed to support other tasks.
Yes, thank you, and not to make this meeting longer than it has to be, I apologize for it. But like, the short-term priorities versus long-term priorities, like, what is the point of us, for example, reorganizing, reformatting, or changing this, that, or the other thing, if we're going to then change our zoning map and then change our, which then would impact the table of use, which would then, I don't know, like, I would love recommendations on like what to do first. Like, an order would be helpful. Because ideally, like, all the stuff we're talking about is like one big overhaul. Do we recommend doing it all at once and like taking the two or three years, not touching, keeping the zoning bylaws as is? And like, or do you do a little bit at a time, like, I, that's where I would scratch my head.
We typically include some discussion on implementation of these recommendations. So, based on your feedback and kind of a more comprehensive list of all the things you have identified as priority issues to address, we'll explore what could be the most productive sequencing of.
And then also, similarly, with like grant funding, for us to work on that would also be another consideration in the sequencing too, which is another puzzle piece.
I will share that the community one-stop-for-growth, we, PVPC has found success with other member communities finding planning grants to do full recodification of zoning bylaw. We're working with three communities currently who all receive funding through One Stop.
Which I learned this morning was not funded for FY '26.
The.
The One Stop for Growth Grants. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, no, I'm sorry, it was a community compact grant program that was not funded, I apologize for that.
I've not heard that, but.
Yeah, I only heard it this morning, so, yeah.
So, quick, before that one goes.
It's going, yeah. Great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
It's been really fantastic.
Seeing the next steps.
I, for one, am really excited about this, so, thank you, and thanks for bearing with us, the public.
I make emotionally adjourned.
Nobody's still watching.
I hear from a couple of people that say they watch them.
Okay.
Oh, see?
Really?
We have two other things left on the agenda, or are we going to bypass those?
I will move through these as quickly as possible. Okay, this is a very long email thread, I think maybe we can stick to just the top page. This is about.
Give us the too-long, good reads.
The difference between re-establishing, it's about the house that burned down.
Yes.
Okay.
The property, the house that burned down on North Street that went to auction.
So, then, various folks came to me, to you, into Town Hall generally, wandering around, looking for advice about whether this is a buildable lot because it's non-conforming, the frontage is too small. So, when it was going to auction, people were wondering if the person who bought it could build on it.
Because our bylaws say that you have to rebuild within two years of the catastrophic event, if it's.
Yes, exactly.
And it has been more than two years.
And it has been more than two years. So, the beginning of the email thread, which is at the back, is about whether, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It's about whether or not there is anything in state law that dictates that the two-year date start, because this is a question people had, does the two-year date start when the house burns down or does it start when it's demolished? So, we answered that with the attorney, he said, basically, we're free to be as generous as we wish towards owners who may want to rebuild after a fire.
What's the relief that we would grant to, to allow the person to rebuild a house? What's the relief that we would grant, a special permit?
Special permit, so, we can, to re-establish the non-conforming. The text.
To re-establish the non-conforming use lot, we could, we could issue a special permit.
A special permit, so that was the original question, okay. Then, we established that there's no state law that's stricter than our law, that's the beginning of this conversation. After that, Stephanie wanted to know, can the footprint of the building be expanded? So, we asked Attorney Mullin this question.
When you're someone who wanted to build a much bigger house than what was currently, that was previously.
Had been there before. He said, you can intensify the existing non-conformity, you can't create another non-conformity.
That's helpful to know in the future going forward.
Yes, then, we could go over this in much more detail, I'm sure, because this is, I mean, it kind of ties into like the clarity that they're raising here. But the last question, which the attorney said was very vague in our zoning, is that Section A, so if you're on the second page of this little packet I gave you, you'll see 3.4.2. Section A basically implies that we can allow by special permit the re-establishment of a non-conforming use. Section B says that they have to rebuild following destruction. It does not say we can allow by special permit any reconstruction of the non-conforming use. So, I asked Attorney Mullin if those two are different, and he says that because of how vaguely it's worded.
It's not a non-conforming use, it's a non-conforming lot.
Sure.
Right?
So, he said.
So, let's just be really clear about that, it's not a non-conforming use, it's a residential district, and they're looking to rebuild the residence.
Right.
That's about a heading issue.
What's that?
That's a heading issue because it says it's under 3.4.2 uses.
Right. This is kind of just a chat about, and it's meant to be an answer if anybody asks you.
About what can happen.
About what can happen on that property. This is meant to be something of an answer to that question, even though the attorney ultimately weighed in and said that. He said, the planning board could construe the bylaw to say, could he rebuild up with, could he rebuild with a special permit even though more than two years has gone by? The planning board could read the bylaw to say no, since there's nothing in that Section B about allowing reconstruction with a special permit, or.
But 3.4.2 is speaking about non-conforming uses. It's related to the removal of a building that was dedicated to a non-conforming use, but it's not about conforming uses on a non-conforming lot.
So, maybe that's.
Yeah, the non-conformity has nothing to do with the use.
Sure, so that's just a problem with our bylaw entirely, like, there is no answer to this question, maybe. Because this is the only place that it talks about destruction by fire in the entire bylaw. So, if we crammed the fire part into this use part, that's part of our problem. So.
So, he's saying that we, so, bottom line, what can we, what do we say?
So, on the front page, he says, I say the planning board could construe the bylaw to say, no, we can't grant permission through special permit because it is ambiguously drafted. However, the foregoing construction is the only one that I can think of that gives meaning to both Sections A and B without reading the letter, it's mere surplusage. So, I think he's saying, we need, I mean, I think ultimately, we need to discuss this in a little more detail to really interpret this, if there's like difference being used in all these things. But like, the top line is it's, it is ambiguous, it's been confirmed by the attorney, that we don't have clear direction on this. And maybe we should talk about this at another meeting if we want an answer to this question. But if anybody asks a member of the planning board about this lot, I don't think anyone should be saying a hard yes or no until we understand better what our zoning is telling us.
But if, if we, if it were allowed, it would have to be a special permit, it's not by right.
That's the closest I think we can get to what.
Do we have an application yet, or is this just a casual conversation?
Somebody bought the property.
And they're looking to see if they can rebuild? Have they filed for a building permit yet?
No, it's just that the butters are asking the question.
Okay, in the interest of time, let's put this on the next agenda, or at least my recommendation is, that gives us all.
Can I ask really quickly, are the butters for or against it?
I, they didn't say, but I get the impression maybe they would love for it to be an empty lot.
You get the impression what?
That maybe they would love for it to remain an empty lot.
Oh. Just the opposite.
I think it might depend on who you're talking to, but there've been multiple of ours.
Yeah. Okay, I will wrap this up. The ADU bylaw, I asked the attorney as well if we should qualify recommending to people that they follow the new ADU bylaw that they follow the new ADU bylaw or the previous ADU bylaw until it's formally. This is also something we should probably put on the next agenda because the point is, we need to, in some way, qualify that it's on, that there's liability in following the new one without discouraging that. He said, technically, you know, it is at the peril of the builder, is the words that.
If they're following the new one.
The new one until it's, until it's signed off on by the A G. But he also said there's like almost no chance that the A G will reject what we passed.
Or if they will, it'll be pieces of what we've had.
Very minor, right, so.
The A G signs off on it, it is effective back to the date of town meeting, correct?
Yes. So that's something I think also maybe we should talk about at our next meeting about how to frame that, or we should get further advice from the attorney about what, because we don't want to, I don't want to use the word peril, maybe.
Have there been requests to move on an ADU?
Right, I don't, we wouldn't hear about it necessarily. I think maybe we should be getting that from the building inspector. If he's getting applications, it'd be nice to know about them. And on that note, the sign-offs for planning board are live on the Permitize.
What does that mean?
It means that we now.
And what is Permitize?
Permitize is the website, it's spelled Permitize. It's where we take a look at all the building permit applications that come in and have sometimes interdepartmental sign-off on them. So it came up before because someone hadn't filed an A N R that was mandated in their special permit that they needed to file before building could begin. And so we realized that if we had some oversight of that, we would be able to prevent things like that from falling through the cracks. So now, planning gets a notification whenever there's a building permit application coming in and we can look over it, we're not looking over it for zoning compliance, that's the building inspector. We're looking at it to see if there is a planning-related permit, and then we can flag or make a note or approve. And that doesn't, the building inspector then checks for compliance with, if there's a special permit, checks for compliance during the building process and won't issue a certificate of occupancy unless the special permit has been satisfied.
Great, so just like housekeeping.
Yeah, exactly. I wrote some new copy for the website, which I'll show you later, and the housing production plan, there's an outline. I'll show it to you later.
Is that something, are those two things that you would like to discuss at our next meeting?
Yes.
So it sounds like we're going to have another long next meeting, y'all, so.
Okay.
Potentially, potentially.
Make a motion we adjourn this meeting.
Before we do that, I would like to discuss our next scheduled meeting only because it's right after Labor Day, and I don't know if people have particular. Normally, we meet that Wednesday right after Labor Day, but I don't know if there's any reason why people would want to meet the week after or how people feel about that.
Wednesday, that Wednesday is fine. Wednesday's fine with me.
Not aware of any conflicts.
Just like start of school usually, blah, 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 blah.
I have no life, that's fine. Actually, school starts the week before, doesn't it?
Yeah, probably.
Friday before or something like that.
My youngest starts daycare the day before, sad. So Wednesday, September 3rd.
Yeah.
Is our next meeting.
And I'll second his motion to adjourn.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Hi, the meeting is adjourned at 8:18 P M.